City Council meeting for September 27, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, we're going to move on now to announcements and community reports.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Hi, thanks. I would like to move to excuse Councilmember McDougall from tonight's meeting. He's unable to make it.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Bruce. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on now to Item Three, Announcements and Community Reports, and the first item is 3A. This is the COVID-19 update for September 27. As of this week, the state of Washington reports 569,726 cases of COVID, 7,494 deaths throughout the pandemic. Statewide, our vaccination rate of those receiving at least one dose is 76.4%. 69.7% of those 12 years of age and older are fully vaccinated. Effective September 24, the CDC Director approves the Pfizer boosters for the following groups: People 65 years and older, residents in long-term settings, people ages 18 to 64 with underlying medical conditions, people age 18 to 64 who are in increased risk due to occupation or situational settings identified by the CDC. In Skagit County, as of today, we've had 9,142 COVID cases. 7,530 of those were with a PCR positive, that's the lab test, and 1,612 was the antigen positive, that's the rapid tests. We've had 96 fatalities in the county and 534 people have been hospitalized. In Skagit County, 168,623 vaccine doses have been administered to date. And the Skagit County Fairgrounds Testing and Vaccine Site is open Monday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Testing services are limited to people who live, work, or go to school in Skagit County. First and second dose vaccines are available to those aged 12 and older, and please speak to your medical provider prior to seeking a third dose. As always, the best way to be safe is by getting a vaccine following the statewide mask mandates and following the CDC recommendations. Any questions? All right, we'll move on then to Item 3B, which is our Finance Committee update. Every member of the council... All right, I think...
Mayor Gear.
Yes, go ahead.
We had a finance meeting last week, but I was unable to attend, so I don't have any...
Yeah, and I think Bruce was there, and he's not here tonight, so we can do a follow-up next week. Unless someone has something else to answer. All right, we'll move on then to Item 3C, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. We had a Housing Affordability Community Services meeting last Thursday, September 23, and we were very fortunate to have Erin von Fempf from Mount Vernon and Lieutenant Moore from the Mount Vernon Police Department, and they have been working in tandem with their embedded social worker program that's been going on for about four years, and it really seems like they've done some phenomenal work despite all the complications and difficulties there are with not having it fully staffed. So we learned about the current landscape. They mostly work with houseless individuals. They get referrals from officers and community members and try to link individuals to services. And it seems that they've been very successful. In 2020, they were in contact with over 400 people. So there are a lot of details to that with the goal being to reduce 911 calls. So we learned about that program as we continue to explore the gaps in services for our own citizens and what we can do to help fill them. So that was great to learn, you know, another avenue for doing that. But of course, funding is always a really big deal, and we didn't find out a whole lot about that. But it seems to be a very successful program, and there is more that we will be able to learn from that going forward. And it just seems great the way the partnership is working between behavioral health and the police department. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Moulton. Any additions to that report? Okay, we'll go on then to Item 3D. It's our Library Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So Mr. McDougall and I were there with our museum director, or sorry, our library director, Jeff Vogel. So first of all, a big thank you to Rhea Kilburn. She spent 15 years as the library children's assistant and provided wonderful experiences for our small citizens, both with craft projects and library time and all of that. She has since retired to move on to other exciting adventures, and Lisa Jackson, who was an existing library staff member, has taken her place. We have three part-time library assistant positions open, and so if anyone is interested, please make sure to apply. We have seen a drop in foot traffic because of COVID, but we are only down about 30% from physical checkouts of books since 2019, and our eBooks are up about 86% since 2019. The library has determined that all adult programs will be virtual through the end of 2021 and that their meeting rooms will remain closed because of kind of the uptick in COVID cases for Skagit County. There is a library board position available, so if anyone is interested in volunteering, please put that application in. They're always looking for folks who are willing to put their time and energy towards the library. Summer reading was up with over about 400 signups. A big thank you to Shell for providing steam and STEM kits that are still available, and they're working on continuing to get those out to the kids. And then finally, the library has been providing student library cards to everyone who is a student of Anna-Corde School District, regardless of if they live within the city limits or not. But part of the challenge is that they would have a student ID number and a library card, and the school district and the library have tried, have worked really hard to make that number the same for both student ID and the library card, just to kind of streamline it for teachers and checking things out and whatnot. So they think they finally got that dialed in. So that's a big accomplishment and good work for both the library and the school district so that they can, so that all of our students on Fidago Island can access our library. And that, I think, is all for now.
Thank you. Great report. We'll move on then to Item 3E, the Fiber Committee. Do we have an update or not? Okay. All right, we'll continue that to next week, and then we'll move on to Item 3F, our Planning Committee. Was there a planning committee?
Here.
Mr. Walters.
The Planning Committee did meet. Just before this meeting, we talked principally about new permitting software that the Planning Department is very interested in. They're currently using the Eden system that most of the city is operating on. But that Eden system, which includes the financial software, includes the HR software, includes a lot of different things, has reached end of life. And with our move to Office 365, we're not currently set up for the existing on-premises Eden software to send emails through the cloud. And apparently, we've given up on that. So instead, what we're trying to do is find some alternative, modern software that would provide for interactive tracking of permit applications, submitted of permit applications online through a web portal, and all the routing through email and through direct access to the web portal internally to the city so that everybody who needs to review a permit application is prompted at the appropriate times and permit, the flow of permit applications is made more efficient. I think the committee generally was in favor of that concept. More to come on review of the particular product that they're talking about. And I understand the Finance Committee, or maybe just Bruce, got a presentation on it last week as well. And then we do have a couple of Growth Board appeals pending right now, and we talked a little bit about those. Those have grown out of our adoption of the Critical Areas Ordinance, and that's all we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. So any other comments, any reports? All right, we'll move on to Item Four, which is Public Comment. And if there's anyone attending remotely or here in the audience that would like to talk to the council about anything that's not on the agenda tonight, it's your opportunity to come forward at this time. Yes, come on up, Chris. You should push down, you'll see a blue light when you push on the microphone. There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Just state your name.
Just state your name.
Okay.
My name is Chris McKenzie. My name is Chris McKenzie. I live at 13027th Street. This is disconcerting.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm working with a group of citizens on a...
With a group called...
Historic downtown Anna-Corde.
What is...
Mayor Gear, here.
Yes, one moment, Chris.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can we hold off on this? We get the technical problem resolved.
Yeah. I know Matt is here.
Is here.
And Mitch.
Mitch.
Any thoughts on...
Thoughts on...
Wish I knew how to sign.
Okay, why don't you try...
Try it again. Try it again.
No, not yet.
No, not yet.
Jennifer or Matt?
Can you mute?
What needs to be muted? There. Is that muted now? Probably now, Chris.
Try it again?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm working with...
I speak right into the microphone and make sure it's on.
It's on.
All right.
I'm working with a group of residents on a community building and a group that's worked, we're working to make the downtown, to give some vitality to downtown. Downtown seems to have a bit of an inferiority complex right now. So we want to bring some more life back into downtown and to just build it into like a third place, a community place where people hang out and where you enhance the quality of your lives, hang out with one another. It's just our community's living room, and people have quite a lot of love for their downtown. When we, I don't, it's because, I've become conscious that they're doing... The entry to our downtown is the arch that's down at 12th, and I know that there's some development going on down there, and I would like to encourage whoever's doing the design on that to recognize that this is the entry to our downtown community, and maybe if they would keep the sightlines in mind when they do that planning. The sightlines that would, to see the arch, that they can see as people come up into the community and come east from the ferries, be able to get a sightline of that arch and not do it, put anything in the way of that. It was a wonderful public-private partnership back in 2005, and it's, we shouldn't, we shouldn't let anything happen to that. But anyway, that's my request, that they keep that in mind as they're doing the development.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Is there any member that is attending remotely that would like to speak to us on anything that's not on the agenda? And if so, raise your digital hand, and I will call on you. All right, I don't see any other hands raised, so we'll move on from public comment, and we'll move to the Consent Agenda, Item Five, A through E.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So now we're moving to Item Six. This is a closed-record decision hearing, SDP 2021-001. This is the MJ Property Shoreline Clearing and Grading. This is a discussion of possible action, and Mr. Meesmer is going to introduce this along with his staff. Thank you. Mr. Meesmer, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Gear, members of the council and the audience. I'd like to introduce Emily Morgan, our senior planner. She's been working very diligently on this project, and she is ready to go, it looks like. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Dawn. Welcome, Emily.
There we go. Hello, everyone. Is my screen still being shown?
Yes, we can see your screen. We can't see you, but... All right.
Okay, so this is, as Dawn stated, a closed-record decision hearing for the MJB Clearing and Grading Project. It will take place along the Bay Year on a 28-acre parcel. This is Phase Two of the development. Phase One was approved for the clearing and grading of the upland portion on June 23 of this year. The zone is marine mixed use. The shoreline environment designation is urban, and this type of development would be permitted with review of a shoreline substantial development permit as we are here today. So a little project history. It really started, there's been, I'm sure, as you are all aware, lots of Planning Commission meetings and city council and changing the zoning and, you know, getting the site ready to move forward with this development. But for this project specifically, a mandatory pre-application meeting was held on November 11 of 2020. We then had the mandatory neighborhood meeting on January 5 of this year. The formal shoreline substantial development permit application was submitted on February 22. At this time, we were already processing Phase One, so staff kind of put the project on hold until we had approval of that portion. And as a way to kind of streamline it, we can combine Phase One and Two in the SEPA review. And on June 3, we issued the mitigated determination of non-significance. On June 8, the application for the shoreline portion was deemed complete for processing and then went out for public notice on June 16. The comment period ended July 16. We had the notice of hearing published in the middle of August on the 18th, public hearing with the Planning Commission on September 8, where they recommended approval as condition to you with the slight modification of an addition of condition of approval, which I will talk about a little further later. So to give a kind of a full spectrum of what this is proposing, it is essentially just getting the site ready for the proposed development, which is to come. The site will be rough graded, which will include 100 cubic yards of fill and over 400 cubic yards of cut. I want to just provide clarification because throughout the application materials, it does reference 150,000 cubic yards of fill. However, that was including the upland portion because a lot of the materials were from both phases. With this, the applicant will be installing those erosion control BMPs, clearing the existing land cover, placing the fill soils, which will be from an upland off-site location. There will be no excavation in the shoreline of, you know, taking the materials to fill the land. And all of this will occur no less than 10 feet from the ordinary high water mark. So again, this project qualified for a shoreline substantial development permit as a Type Four due to the evaluation, and that's why we are here today. The project is permitted use within the urban shoreline environment designation for the upland fill. And I know that there has been some concerns over the fill placement within the buffer. However, this project is not exempt, but it does allow for the fill to prep sites for future phases of development. So I'll circle back to the fill in a moment, but the key points with this project is that all work is to occur landward of the ordinary high water mark. Again, that the urban shoreline allows for the upland fill placement. Based on the submitted materials, no anticipated loss of ecological function is expected for this portion of development. Please note that there will be, I think, next phase, the idea is to do a full shoreline restoration, which is very exciting for this site, being that it has been so heavily utilized as industrial for so long. So it'll provide, you know, more of an actual ecological function, and it will be a huge benefit. And then again, the material brought in for this project is from an upland source, and again, no beach excavation will be taking place. So to talk about, just because I want to be very clear, because I know that there was comments received and concerns regarding, you know, the work which will be occurring closer or within that 25-foot buffer. So first, there were no concerns or comments received from relating to the scope of the project from any federal or state agencies during any of the comment periods for this project. The 25-foot buffer, as it is talked about in the urban section of the Shoreline Master Program, it does say that a 25-foot buffer setback is for buildings and structures and for non-water-dependent structures and uses. Along with developments consisting of public-access, water-oriented recreation are not required to meet the shoreline setback requirements. As well as fill landward of the ordinary high water mark should be permitted when necessary to support permitted uses and when impacts can be avoided and mitigated. And all of this dirt work to occur is ultimately in support of the proposed roads that are going to be placed on here, which is listed as a permitted use in Table 5.1 of the Shoreline Use Matrix of the Shoreline Master Program, as well as the storm and drainage plan that will be implemented. So all that being said, the Planning Commission again did recommend approval with the addition of this condition here. Prior to commencement of construction activities within shoreline jurisdiction, the applicant shall coordinate with the Washington Department of Ecology for the verification of the ordinary high water mark. This was brought into light just to ensure that, you know, these plans have been drawn for a little bit, but just to ensure that the depiction of the ordinary water mark is as accurate as it can possibly be. So based upon the application materials, the findings of facts and conclusions within the staff report, as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation, staff therefore recommend city council approve the shoreline substantial development permit subject to the proposed conditions of approval. And with that, do we have any questions for me?
Counsel, you have any questions? Okay, so it is...
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters and then Mr. Young.
So Ms. Morgan, just to clarify, the proposed work is for the clearing and grading within the shoreline jurisdiction. Certainly, there will be later activities within shoreline jurisdiction, but the scope of work that's proposed to be permitted under this permit is simply the clearing and grading. Is that right?
That is correct, yes. It does kind of accompany Phase One, which did propose, you know, the construction and the placement of the utilities and stormwater facility as well as the proposed road to extend T Avenue.
Yeah, but not the vertical development.
Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Young?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gear. Mr. Walters kind of addressed exactly what I was looking for you to comment on. But would, just for the record, again, I've had some phone calls from, with environmental concerns of the shoreline, and I noticed that you went through great length, Ms. Morgan, to address that it meets the conditions and so, and that you also pointed out that later on, there would be some restorative work later to improve the process. So would you just emphasize that just a little bit further, if you won't mind?
Yes, I currently actually have the preliminary conceptual plans for the shoreline restoration project, which is going to be very beautiful and very exciting. But something also to know, as stated in, you know, the materials, none of the work will occur within 10 feet, so there is, in a way, that little bit of buffer. And as part of the conditions of approval, we are requiring, you know, full fencing along that 10-foot just to make it very clear that nothing is to be taking place waterward of that. As well as, within the plans, they are, it's already been constructed kind of on the upland portion, but there has been a drainage infiltration swale put in to kind of intercept anything that may occur during a rainy season and prevent it from entering the water.
Thank you, because I guess the concern for me, and I think from the people I was speaking too, was more about just the fact that, you know, preserving the waterfront ecological system to make sure that we're not harming it. And I noticed that we'll be vigilant about that, and it meets all the criteria. So really, at this point, they've met all the criteria, and the only thing we're doing at this point is making sure that there are not any glaring omissions and that the concerns of the public, as well as environmental concerns, are being met. And that's what you've just assured us.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
So at this time, if there's any comments from the parties of record, if you want to raise your hand, I will call upon you to speak to the council. Parties of record. Okay, I have one raised hand at this time, Sarah Hollahan. And after Sarah, it'll be Brian Wetcher. Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
My name's Sarah Hollahan, 151138th Street. My question actually to staff would be, our shoreline master plan sets out this 25-foot buffer. So I'd like to actually know, what is the meaning of that? I believe it was based on best science, although our plan is, I think, about 10 years old. So if the shoreline plan states a 25-foot buffer, but we don't follow that, I'd like an explanation. Thank you.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So to provide a little clarification, there is a difference between a buffer and the setback. So typically, the buffer is established at this time per our current SMP through a consultant or an environmental specialist, which is what has been provided in this application material. That 25-foot number is the setback, so that would be applied to any structure that would be proposed in this area. It has to be 25 feet back from the ordinary high. But again, as far as the buffer, there is allowed work to occur within that if no ecological function would be lost, which is what we have concluded.
Thank you, Emily. Any other questions, Sarah? Okay, Brian, did you have your hand up? Brian Wetcher.
I believe I'm unmuted now. This is Brian Wetcher.
Yes.
I live at 2407 Forest Park Lane. I was one of the original negotiators for Evergreen Islands with the Fidago Bay Plan back in the 90s. So I've, and I've come through quite a few alliterations of planning for this site. Our concern as an organization and as a party of record was and still is the environmental impact on shorelines. Accordingly, we specifically centered our concerns around eelgrass and eelgrass propagation and restoration. Can you tell me, is any part of the restoration plan going to include eelgrass propagation and restoration and/or forage fish habitat restoration along the shoreline, which has been... which has been, um, uh, drastically degraded by the barge loading, uh, facility sites in those particular areas that are directly, um, seaward of the existing shoreline that you've outlined there. Uh, those were very rich eelgrass beds before the modular site was put in. Uh, they had to be dredged out so that the barges could be loaded safely. And, uh, I just wonder if you're going to have required of the parties any seaward restoration of that habitat? And we would suggest and support that eelgrass propagation can be done there effectively.
So to answer your question, at this time, because nothing has formally been submitted, I can't really speak to the specifics. Um, I do know that as conditions within the MDNS as well as the staff report, prior to any work to occur waterward of the ordinary high, we will require an updated, um, habitat assessment that will look closer at those marine environment, um, species. So that way, you know, the surf smell I know is a huge one as well as the eelgrass. So those would be taken a closer look at with that portion of the project. But again, I can't speak too specifically just because nothing has formally been submitted, but just know that it is in the works.
Thank you. Is there any other party of record that would like to comment before the council starts discussing this? I don't see other hands at this time, uh, but I'll check back with you. Um, council, questions of staff, deliberations? You're awfully quiet.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
No, I just, you know, it's, you know, the, Ms. Morgan's presentation has really been, um, I think the packet, the presentation, the issues she addressed and Don addressed have been, have satisfied my concern. And in particular, um, the point about eelgrass propagation and restoration, I think Mr. Wetcher, um, brought that up. Those are my concerns about, uh, in the future concerning this project. I think it's important toward, um, the area that we do some of that. So, uh, you know, I'm, my concerns are really, um, being met right now in this conversation. So, um, but I will look toward the eelgrass propagation for the future discussion we may have about it.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Uh, uh, thanks, Emily, it was a great presentation, I think, uh, for this phase. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about, uh, eelgrass, I'm sure, in probably the next phase or maybe the following phase. Uh, but I think this phase is good to go and it's another step in the right direction for, uh, this, uh, great project for our city. So I move to approve SDP 2021 001, subject to conditions of approval contained in the staff report of 25 August, as well as proposed conditions provided by the planning commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. Are there any additional comments? Questions? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. All right, we're gonna move, we're gonna move on now to item seven under other business. And the first item is our conservation easement program contract review. This is a discussion with possible action and it's open for public comment. So, Mr. Lunsford, is that you tonight?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep, we can, thank you.
Fantastic, okay, I'm gonna share my screen. I'll be joined by some other folks with the Skagit Land Trust, Michael Kirshenbaum, Regina Wandler, and outside council Conrad Legal, as well as on staff, Ms. Swetnam. Also want to thank our GIS department, Rob Hoxsey and Marley Stevens for all of their help putting together various maps you'll see in this presentation, so. All right, can you see my screen yet?
Yep. Yes, we can.
Okay, so the conservation easement program began in, uh, 1998, quite a while ago. So it's passed with the resolution 1492 by city council. It allowed for the protection of acreage in the community forest lands from logging, mining, or development. And, um, that was done with, um, the idea to protect the land that was held as part of, uh, the Anacortes waterlands or watershed lands, so about 1,800 or so acres of that. There's other land that was conserved other, through other methods. So in the conservation easement program, uh, at that time, a thousand eight, a thousand dollars donated protected one acre of land. The money was, that was donated, went into the forest endowment fund, which is a fund operated by the city of Anacortes. The principal is not spent, but interest earnings are available for forest lands management. That's still the case. We have about $2.1 million in that fund or something close to that nature. Mr. Hogan could tell us when we, if you would like to know those details, we can figure that out and bring them back. So, um, what made this work really well was a great public-private partnership between the Skagit Land Trust, the Friends of the Anacortes Community Forest Lands, and the City of Anacortes, who the three of us developed the program. And in the program, the Skagit Land Trust holds the easement and ensures the city is abiding by the easement protections. The Friends of the Forests help promote the program and provide forest lands education. And the city owns the land and manages it for conservation and recreation. So right now, uh, we have about 2,940 acres of the Anacortes Community Forest Lands. About 1,682 acres were conserved through the conservation easement program. And, uh, about 914 acres were conserved by other means. So if you look at the map, there is in bright green are conserved by either through deed, through, um, ordinance, through transfer of lands, uh, and gift, and a couple by sale. So that's about almost a thousand acres, 914. Hart Lake State Park, for those who've read with that, was a big one. Um, land in the Little Cranberry area was conserved via ordinance by council in the 1960s and also land that was donated by the likes of Douglas Almond and others. And there's currently about 344 acres, the areas marked in blue and purple on my screen, that are pending. They're either withheld from the program or sites such as the, uh, Lakeside Quarry area or the Amman landfill that were taken out of the program, um, before they were made available for conservation. And the pending sites, that means that money has been donated, but council, we haven't brought them back to council for conservation because we were doing this project for some time and trying to get everything in order so we could do it correctly. So, um, what we are trying to do tonight is not ask you to pass anything. We just want to kind of get you up to speed on what the easement, conservation easement program was. Because I think the last time I was in front of council was close to 10 years ago. Um, and what we want to do is, um, work with the land trust. And I'll make space for Michael Kirshenbaum and, and Conrad Legal to speak after me if they would like, and, uh, Ms. Swetnam. And what we're trying to do is work to correct some of the errors that were in the 25 existing easements. So just to kind of give you a picture, if you were on council 20 some years ago, uh, we, myself and Mr. Robbins would bring to you a bunch of, uh, easements. You know, some were donated a thousand dollars at a time, some were $5,000 at a time. Some were, um, put together through five and $25 donations. So we had a, a group of easements about, you know, 100 to 120 acres at a time. And we would bring them to council for approval. And then with work through pro bono legal assistance from, um, from local title companies in town and then work with our GIS department and then work through the land trust's legal assistance, we would create these easements, um, run them back through council for final improvement and then they'd go to, um, the county to be registered. And we did this 25 times until we had the easements that you saw, the six, roughly 1,600 acres protected. In times of doing that, there were some errors of overlap or some things that were missed or, um, just not quite identified correctly. And so that's been a big part of this process is to do it accurately, which has been quite painstaking as we're still finishing the last few acres to go through. And so to create one large easement that can be done up to current standards and will then be filed at the county with council approval. So that is what we're working on. We have not completed that task. We have a few outstanding parcels we're just finishing up with, uh, as we speak. And so that's part of the correcting errors and creating the easement. The second half for your council to look at tonight and discuss will be coming up, uh, next. We want to talk about some management for changing conditions and defining commercial uses. And that's some slides I have coming up next. I want to just check in with Michael Kirshenbaum and see, Michael, do you want to jump in and talk about anything I've done? Or would you like me to finish? Michael's in Michigan, so we're having this long-term discussion, our long-distance discussion. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to share with me now?
Um, John, if you can hear me, you're, you're doing great. I'm happy to pick up when you're done.
Okay, thanks, Michael. So we'll just go to the next section. So council in your packet, uh, under the new conservation easement contract, and thanks again to all the people that participated, this was a long, long time coming. Um, one of the significant changes that you'll see is under prohibited use. And so section three, 3A. So what, in talking with land trust, land trust staff and legal assistants and Ms. Swetnam on our staff, looking at how we might want to, um, define commercial use, because that has come up over time, the past 20 some years, how will we define commercial use? And you can see in this paragraph, if you just go down to the last, um, sentence, property for passive recreational educational activities that may have a de minimis commercial nexus, such as paid guided walks by educators, paid photography classes, courses, or the like. So there was some confusion in the past as to what was commercial use. Largely it was discussed, as I said at the outset, no logging, mining, or development would be allowed in the forest lands, but other people thought that meant all commercial activity. And so in talking to the land trust, we came up with this definition that of, say that we through our management plan that would go, that is going to be coming to council on the 18th of October, want to talk about what would be de minimis use of commercial nature in the forest lands. We would talk about it and define it in that management plan. Here's, this, that's, that is not disallowed by the easement program. So the forest lands has a couple layers of protections on it. And so the easement program is one, but the management plan is, uh, that passes city council, the forest lands management plan, uh, last one was passed in 2009, really spells out what can and can't be done. So this is just saying on the land trust perspective, these things are not offensive to us as those holding the easement. All right? Next thing is forward stewardship. And here we were looking with the land trust towards the future. You know, as temperatures warm, climate changes, uh, ecological changes and, and circumstances that we cannot foresee may require some different remedies. And so we wanted to be careful in writing this contract with the land trust so that we could give some room for future managers to take care of those situations in a thoughtful, scientifically-based fashion that would allow such things as, if you join me with the last sentence, such activities may include, but not be limited to, vegetation planting and restoration, removal and management of trees and vegetation, controlled burns, management of invasive weeds and collection of biological specimens. So you'll notice the part that might surprise you, uh, management of trees and vegetation, or removal and management of trees and vegetation and controlled burns. It's not that we're setting out to do that, but in the easement document, we didn't want to tie the hands of future land managers if things like that become necessary. So again, the management plan is passed by council and future council would set those limits as well, but we didn't want to, um, hamstring those activities through the easement program. That is really what that's about. Um, so again, I'll go back to this map of what is and what's pending. And Michael, if you'd like to jump in or anyone else on the team, Ms. Swetnam or Mr. Legal, please, please go ahead and I'll stop talking.
Yeah, um, I'd be, I'd be happy to, John, thank you. Is my audio okay?
Yep.
Fantastic.
Great, thank you. Well, um, I'm Michael Kirshenbaum, I'm the conservation director of Skagit Land Trust. And I want to, uh, thank the, the mayor and the city council for putting this on the agenda and giving us time to speak. Um, the conservation easement program has been really an amazing success story for, for so many years now in a partnership between the city and the land trust, Friends of the Forests, and most importantly, the citizens of Anacortes, who, you know, as John pointed out, have stepped up over decades now to, uh, invest in this program and permanently protect the incredible resource that are the forest lands. It's a really unique, um, for the size of Anacortes to have had the citizenry step up and protect this land in this way, um, is something the land trust is really proud to be part of. So, um, we're, we're happy to be working with the city now to make sure that the easement program is durable um, and, uh, meets all modern standards and practices going into the future. Um, just a little background, then I'll maybe just highlight a couple of things that, that, that John said. Um, you know, the, the whole purpose of the conservation easement the land trust holds on the forest lands is to ensure that in perpetuity forever, they will be protected, not converted. That's really the key word, not converted to other uses like mining and timber harvests and things like that. The land trust doesn't engage in co-management of the forest lands, that's the city's role. We simply hold the conservation easement and make sure that that insurance policy, um, of non-conversion, of maintaining it as a natural and fairly wild, wild place as defined by the easement itself, that that is upheld forever. Um, so we go about that in several ways. Um, we do that by working with the city, uh, when new acreage comes in. So we'll add that to the existing conservation easement. We work to, uh, monitor the conservation easement or, and when I say the conservation easements, that, that really is synonymous with, uh, forest lands that are enrolled in the program. So we monitor those lands enrolled in the easement, um, annually, uh, to make sure that the terms and conditions of easement are being upheld. So that's part of our duty and one the land trust takes in perpetuity to make sure that, uh, the terms of easement are being upheld and then will, you know, can take action, um, to enforce those terms if they aren't being upheld. And thankfully, of course, um, there, there really has never been a problem like that at all. Um, but we stand ready to make sure the terms of easement are being upheld. That's the insurance policy that everyone agreed this conservation easement would be a good idea to have in place. Um, so, um, as John mentioned, um, you know, a few years ago, as we've gone through, um, our national accreditation program, uh, for all land trusts, looking at our standards and practices to make sure that our easements are, uh, up to speed and that they're durable. Um, we went back and looked at all of our older easements and the Anacortes Community Forest Land easement is one of the oldest the land trust holds. You know, this project that the forest land, uh, easement project was a real, a passion of one of the land trust founders, Gene, Gene Murphy. Um, and we're proud to continue that, that legacy. And part of that is by always staying up on what the latest standards and practices and best practices are. And in so doing, we look back through how we had been doing business with the easement program. As John mentioned, came across some kind of relatively minor errors in some of the legal descriptions and knew that we had to clean that up. And then we looked at the language of the easement document itself and recognized that there were probably some unintended consequences in the drafting of that original easement. John mentioned the commercial use language, which was so broad that it might, could be interpreted to prohibit, um, you know, a, a, paid educators doing walks in the park, doing bird walks in the park. And that clearly is not the intent. It was to prevent the commercial conversion of the forest lands, not that kind of minor compatible activity. And then the, probably the biggest unintended consequence we thought we'd like to avoid um, is what John mentioned in this era of climate change and having a forest in the middle of an urban area. There very well might be management practices the city needs to take, um, to maintain the conservation values, maintain the forest. And we don't want the easement language to be so vague that it ties the hands of doing the type of ecological work to control invasive species. ties the hands of doing the type of ecological work to control invasive species, you know, perhaps there's a massive die-off that's caused by an insect infestation, all those things that we can't envision. We want to make sure that the city forest managers are able to restore the health of the forest, but to do so in a way that the land trust, you know, will always have the easement to fall back on to make sure that isn't a loophole that's being used by somebody down the road to convert the forest lands. So it really creates much clearer guidance for us as the stewards of this conservation easement, not the managers of the forest lands, but just the steward of this easement, to be able to work with the city if, you know, hopefully nothing like that ever happens. But again, in this year of climate change, there may need to be forest management. And we want to clarify that that, for the purposes of ecological restoration, is in allowed use, is compatible and always has been with the purposes of the conservation easement. So that's kind of a general summary. I want to, you know, thank John. You know, I was doing a little homework before this, and I came across an article from 2001, was the oldest one I could find in our files about the forest lands. And it was a big, two-page spread in the paper, and it was forest lands, and then there was new park staff hired. It was John Lunsford, who, and he looks remarkably not much older somehow. So John's been there all the way through this, and we've worked with him and with Gary beforehand, and John, and Darcy now, and so many people on this program. So we're happy to keep working on it and look forward to tying up loose ends with this update and continuing to steward the easement into the future. So thank you. Would be happy to answer any questions. And we also have online, or in the audience, our legal counsel, Conrad Legal, who is a national expert in conservation easement law, and our stewardship director, Regina Wondler, who's responsible for monitoring the conservation easement. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Gere?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian.
All right, Mr. Walters and Mr. Lunsford.
I defer to Mr. Lunsford.
Okay, Mr. Lunsford.
And I was just going to procedurally hand it back to you, Mayor. So if there's any questions, we're, at this time, we're going to stand down and answer them and other staff are available. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walters.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that I really appreciate this work. I think most of us have been aware that this has been going on for a while. It really strikes me as an excellent forward-thinking project to clean up these legal descriptions, ensure all these parcels are covered, and to do it in advance of any dispute over any particular parcel or any boundary, so we're not chasing our tails. And to take the same opportunity to evolve the easement text so that we're covering new eventualities based on current science. You have that map up on the screen that isn't in our packet. And I can follow up with John separately as well, but I'm wondering if some of those areas that are not currently protected by conservation easements would still benefit from conservation easements even if they are protected by some other means, or, and those might be various different means, maybe offering various levels of protection. It seems to me that the conservation easement that we give to Skagit Land Trust is maybe the best way of protecting these parcels from a future evil, evil city council that might try to develop them. So what can you, what can you tell us with specificity about some of these other colored parcels? Or you could just tell me that it's too much detail and we should follow up separately.
I can, we can do a little bit of both. I'll just kind of give you a thumbnail sketch. So in the center of the screen is Hart Lake, a former state parkland. That has quite sophisticated protections on it. And that was reviewed by the Hart Lake management team back in the, about 2008 era, and looked through the various protections there. So you have protections in a natural forest area and recreation area, and then a resource recreation area. So the state put various protections with a clause in the deed that it goes back to the state if we don't abide by those protections. The city and the management plan, they tightened some of those protections because the state would allow some things like commercial vending that we just wouldn't allow. If you go to the top of Mount Erie, that was donated by a fellow named Gus Tensler, and he had protections in that gift that are in the deed. They're probably 80-plus years old in his direction, what he wanted. So you could look at that area, same with the Cranberry area in the top of the screen, to update those. The question would just be then working with the land trust to find areas that we felt were needed and the areas that we felt weren't. The only area that's protected by ordinance is the Cranberry Lake area. That's not part of the Douglas almond donation. Some of the deeds that were in the Douglas almond donation and others say things like the land, "The tree shall never be severed from the land." So pretty clear reference to logging and development, maintaining a natural area. Some of them just say to maintain for park purposes. So that kind of gives you an overview of what they are. We can look at those if you'd like in the future, but that gives you a sense.
Yeah, I'll follow up more with you separately, but my sense is that anywhere where we don't have a third party, like the Skagit Land Trust, to help enforce those protections, Hart Lake being an exception because it's the state of Washington, that it would be worthwhile looking at that. Because the magic of the conservation easement program is a third party holds that right, not us, not our ordinances. But let's talk more about that separately from this project.
Okay.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Great presentation. I think the changes as presented are very smart and reasonable changes. I guess, I think, John, you may have mentioned in the beginning, what was the approximate date of the previous contract? What are we updating?
Right, so thank you, Mr. Miller. That's a good question. So 1998, December 1998, created.
That's what I thought I heard. And I'm not looking to put additional work, but you mentioned the great work of Mr. Hoxsey and GIS. I think, I imagine eventually the goal is to put all those various deed restrictions, limitations, ordinances in GIS. Is that why you mentioned the GIS team?
They helped us to create this map. And then, once we got this all together, then yes, we would, we could make that easily publicly available. And I think that the community would like that. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, thanks.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Members of the audience, does anyone in the audience have a question or comment? Okay, Brian Wetcher, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Gere. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. I think maybe Gene Murphy and Jerry Walrath are smiling down on us right now. I urge the city council to endorse these updates of the contract to a 21st century contract with the Skagit Land Trust. This program has been an outstanding success from a simple idea. I would hope that Mr. Lunsford might include in his presentation about this the simple dollar amount that is currently in the conservation easement program. I didn't catch that as part of the presentation. But when the program was originally conceived and brought forward, it was thought that the program might garner a million in 20 years. And I would just defer to Mr. Lunsford about how fantastically successful this program has been in financially supporting the city forest lands. And I would thank all of the staff that have worked on this from both Skagit Land Trust and the city for quite a few years now to make this into a 21st century document, which will enable us to go forward in a flexible manner with the conservation easement program and the agreement with the city. I look forward to furthering these agreements with Skagit Land Trust as much as possible, and I hope that the city endorses this language. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We also have Asa Dean with his hand up. Asa?
Can you hear me now?
We can, welcome.
Hello, my name is Asa Dean. I'm the executive director of the Friends of the Forest. And I also just wanted to wholeheartedly endorse the changes that are being made to simplify the easement, and especially in terms of having a language and openings for management alterations depending on what happens in the future, I think. And we, at Friends of the Forest, think is integral to being able to successfully preserve the forest lands. So just really want to emphasize what a wonderful job the land trust and the city have done in putting this together and working through it over the last couple of years here, and endorse the changes as they are to help preserve the forest lands in perpetuity.
Thank you, Asa. All right, council, questions for Michael or John or discussion?
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
So I understand that John would like to take this back, do a little more work, and bring it forward to some future meeting. He's nodding.
That's exactly right, correct.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so we'll bring this back.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Ms. Moulton?
It looks like someone, Sarah Hallahan, might have her hand up.
Oh, thank you. I missed that. Sarah, just go ahead.
Thank you. Do you want me to say my name and address again?
No, just your name.
Okay. This is Sarah Hallahan. I really appreciate these updates. Sound really good. And the part about clarifying the commercial use is not excluding nature-guided trails and educational. But I would like them to look at what other places they're doing for best practice, because it seems like you might need to limit the size of any of those particular activities. Because I don't want to see like, you know, 25 people on bicycles or something in a group. So I think that's something that should be clarified. And one aspect I think needs to be looked at is foraging. Like, I didn't see that that was addressed either. So those are just things for the future to look at. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Lunsford, you'd like to bring this back in a few weeks for final action? Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we'd like to finish up, provide you with the detailed maps that are called for in the exhibit and some final language. Bring that to council for review, and then see what council's pleasure is at that time, what they'd like to do. So yes, a few weeks out.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Lunsford? All right, so now we'll move on to Item 7B, which is Ordinance 3095, an interim ordinance declaring emergency and adopting a moratorium on acceptance of certain land use applications in the commercial use zone related to self-service storage facilities. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you, Mayor Gere, members of the council and the audience. Inter-ordinance 3095 declared an emergency and adopted a moratorium on the acceptance of certain land use applications in the commercial use zone related to self-service storage. So it is self-service storage facilities are currently listed as a permitted use in the commercial use zone consistent with Table 19.41.050. The self-storage category consists of facilities providing separate storage areas for personnel or business designed to allow private access by the tenant for storing or moving property and fully enclosed indoor, could be multi-story, could be of any warehouse, and it could be fairly large. There are building design standards as far as bulk and height, et cetera. There are also block frontage requirements that would apply, such as landscape block frontage or storefront block frontage. The maximum size of the building could be $200,000, 200,000 square feet, excuse me, based on Table 19.41. And so we have heard from several community members in that such a use in our commercial core area would be more of a passive rather than an active use, and therefore not encouraging multifamily development, retail development, and commercial, other general commercial-type developments. So staff is recommending a moratorium to allow time for the community and planning commission to thoroughly review the allowance of self-service storage facilities in the commercial use zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Council questions, thoughts?
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I think this is a good idea. I know a number of us on council have heard from constituents about concerns about this. The one question I had, because I always try to like to learn from history, especially as we try to do adjustments to our new Title 19, this was a permitted use prior to our changing of the Title 19, was it not, in the commercial zone?
That's correct, Mr. Miller.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's just interesting that we kind of missed that, because I think if we were, we were looking at the codes as we were spending a lot of time discussing whether we wanted a 100,000-square-foot retail in that area, we probably, if we knew about the 200,000-square-foot storage, we probably would have made some adjustments back there. So again, good catch, and I think it's a good opportunity to look at adjusting the code.
And Mayor Gere, if I might mention?
Yes, Mr. Meesmer.
Staff will be coming back to council within 60 days to hold a public hearing as well.
All right.
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton?
In absence of further comment, I move to approve Ordinance 3095 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Young. Any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor Gere.
Yes, Ms. Clela McGrath.
I just want to say, you know, our Title 19 update was pretty extensive and thorough. And so thank you to the public for reviewing the work we did and for bringing forward their comments. Because I think this is, this was our goal, was that we do an update, but we also allow for, you know, missed opportunities to be brought forward and that we can make a quick modification. So thank you to the public who brought this concern to us. And thank you for Mr. Meesmer and for the planning commission to kind of do a deep dive and then bring it back to council.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second and comments. And Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to go into executive session. The city council and the city attorney will now meet in executive session to discuss potential litigation as allowed by RCW 42.30.111I and potential real estate transactions per RCW 42.30.1101. The city council will be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes or until 7:45? Is that about right, Ms.? About 7:45 this evening. The city council will take no action during the executive session. And after the session, I will come out and report back when the meeting has adjourned. All right, at this time, we'll go into executive session.